Ms. Jackson? Do you have some biographical material?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce the following members of our ranks, both from NYPD, first, Tyler Lucia, he grew up in Billard Island, graduated from Lumbert High School, he enlisted in the United States Air Force, where he served from 2008 to 2012 as a maintenance technician on friendships. In 2015, he joined NYPD and was assigned to patrol division in a PSA two, which covers East New York, Landville, areas of Brooklyn. I live in Billard Island with my wife Lauren, and I'm here in Angelia and Camden. Also like to introduce Officer Antonio Gandino, he's born and raised in Garden City, graduated from Sherman High School, and later went on to earn his bachelor's degree in Duffley University. He joined NYPD in July 2014, was assigned to the 40-foot precinct, where he served in the patrol sector, post-indue conditions unit, as well as being a field training officer. He was recipient of the Cup of the Month Award in 2018, and he was also received a citation award while he was in the NYPD Risk Management Bureau. So, and he's also married, his wife Alessandra, his parents, mom and father, and there was all your time.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, I owe it.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
With the best of my ability.
With the best of my ability.
By the power vested in me as police commissioner of Village of Garden City, I depay your due leave of employment. Congratulations.
And then would you like to have some pictures? First of all, trustees like to be included? And did you have family that you wanted to take with you?
Sure.
Family come on up. One more.
Time? I'm trying to get mine.
At this time, we will have comments on the agenda by department heads and by the village administrator. Ms. Reed, Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. Other than the others, I really have nothing on the agenda, just a couple items. On October 26th, we had drug take back day. We, according to the police department, picked up eight boxes of unwanted and unused and unneeded medications. And we also helped at Duffley, picked up four boxes, we total 12 boxes, and we have over 500 pounds of medication for the toll booth streets. So, it was a successful day. Also, the police department would like to announce on November 1st, New York State passed the new child seat law for wall backed, or wall backed seat passengers under the age of two, must be restrained, rear facing, specially designed seats that conform to the federal motor vehicle safety standards. It must be permanently fixed by, either permanently fixed or fit fixed by belt. The law was put in there because of 75% more, you have 75% more chance of being injured as under two years old if you're not rear facing. So, they put this law, they actually passed it two years ago, but they give people time to deal with it, by the way, that's also the manufacturers to make the right chair for them. So, it's a, it's a great law, was a little unfortunate, and I always remind everybody, it's a three-point violation on your license. So, we're asking everybody to, to understand a lot of, the buyer, child seat, by one that's informed, so to regulate.
Commissioner, when did you think?
November 1st.
Was that in the news?
Yes, yes, yes.
Maybe we should put another notice out, because I'm thinking that people are going to buy the law on kind of the seat.
Well, if you, if you take a look, I, I saw on, on the websites, I know that Kenny was working, they've also already sent it out to the POAs, it was on all of the Facebook websites, and I believe that he also coordinated with Chris, is that correct, Chris? So, they would be putting into paper layers column, whatever, yeah, so they're putting in notifications, but, yeah, the police department, Kenny was working, is, is this the law there? But like I said, I saw it on the WPOA, I saw the ESIP posted it as well.
Very good. Chief Strisco?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda, just two items. Just to remind residents, fall season of the coaching, in the middle of, please don't park cars on leaf paddles, hot exhausts from the cars will cause a car fire, a significant car fire. And the second item is, please yield to emergency response vehicles, that's animals, fire, and police, when we're trying to respond to a call, please yield to them responding to a call.
Chief, what's one other thing? If you're being released into the street, please don't light the fire engine, keep that clear all around it, please. Thank you.
Chief, have you had a problem with people not, the fire not getting ignited?
Most people know what to do, some people, they get very...
Shaky.
Shaky, they'll stop right in front of you, they'll pull to the right, they won't, they'll pull, they'll stop right in front of you, they'll pull to the right, stop, the idea is to yield to emergency response vehicles and move to the right.
So, maybe you could add that to, you know, pull to the right.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Mayor, standing in for a moment for village administrator, item four, village administrator, on the consent calendar is a request for authorization for the village to enter into three different agreements, consisting of two licenses and one easement, all relate to LIPA's Western Transmission Project, about which we have heard a great deal, and which includes running enhanced electrical transmission equipment through Garden City. One license agreement allows LIPA to construct a so-called trenchless crossing across Horton Road, beginning at the southeast corner of Stewart and Clinton. Another license allows LIPA to do the same across Stewart Avenue, just outside of Village Hall, and then the easement agreement allows LIPA to permanently service the electrical equipment being placed underground outside Village Hall. The first license pays us the sum of $11,050, the second $6,000, and the last $41,000. The two license agreements are terminable by the village on 30 days notice, should we wish to do so.
Thank you. Mr. D. Francisco?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a number of items on the agenda this evening. Item 10, additional engineering services for the redevelopment, item number 10. We've done some changes to the scope of this project, which requires some additional engineering work, which is what this charge is, some additional costs were incurred to, to make changes to the scope of the work at this well site for, for Work Consultants H2N. Item number 11, there's a conference in December for the two members of my engineering department are going to be attending, this is for the GIS system that we use, not only in engineering, but the number of departments in the village also use this system, this is a, a training and, and a conference for this system. Item number 12 is acceptance of maintenance bond for the capital project, electrical improvements at Country Club well site 13 and 14. This is the closeout of this project that started, I believe, prior to me being here, I believe it started in 2015. The project is now complete, and this is the maintenance bond, the acceptance of the, asking for acceptance of the maintenance bond to put an end to this project. Item number 13, is a purchase of equipment, this is part of the 2019, 2019, 2020 Capital Equipment Purchase Program in Public Works. The two dump trucks this year came slightly under budget, the crank shell basic cleaner came in slightly over budget, but we have savings on other vehicles that we purchased to offset the cost of this item coming in above budget, so all in all, the vehicles remain, the vehicle purchases for this capital item remain under budget for the year. Item number 14 is, I am requesting emergency resolution to enter into an agreement with Tommy Recycling Westbury. Tommy Recycling Westbury is our current recycler who accepts all recycling materials that we pick up for the village, and up until November 1st, that agreement, there was no charges to that agreement, we, we, they accepted our recycling at no cost. We were notified by them a couple weeks ago that they, due to changes in the market, that they are now going to start charging us to accept the recycling that we bring in. This agreement is, just so we do not have any type of breakdown in service, I mean, I can keep the continuity, but we are going to revisit this, this agreement and possibly go out to business and try to obtain better rates from a, possibly another company. So, this, this is only put in place now to maintain continuity of service, and we will further investigate other options when it comes to this.
This will also include what exactly did you say? I think part of the problem is clearly plastics are not as economical with the certain other components of the, the truck.
Correct, the, the rates for newspaper cardboard, as you can see on the, the den rider, was significantly lower than the rates for the plumbing elements, the plastics and metal, so...
And the realization is that it costs us what, $72 a tonne to send it to for van?
For, for, yes, for garbage, yes.
So, you have to start thinking about the economics of it, you know, do we essentially subsidize the, the cost of, or pay additional cost for recycling, you know, it costs more than it would cost to take it to the village?
That's correct, which is why we need to explore the market, this is just a rate right now to, again, to just keep the service without any breaks in service right now, and we will, we will explore the market, and hopefully obtain better prices.
Joe, is there anything the residents can do to help us in this regard, if you got to recycling? I, I know this has been a big change, and, and ultimate users, end users are Chinese, and they don't want certain, certain...
They, they're not purchasing any work, so, and that market is completely shut down. So, I think it's going to their Indian house.
Is there anything we, that the residents can do to take it out of the stream that would help us? And if, if you don't know the answer, I mean, maybe just look into it.
All right, the other option would be to throw away, if the household is running the street, the household, I don't think this point counts, yeah. Lastly, item number 15, is requesting authorization for a pilot test on another, I had the opportunity last week, or maybe two weeks ago, a swazi, I went out to Green Lawn, and observed a different form of treatment for one quart dioxide, a different process, a different system, and currently, right now, that system isn't approved for usage by National Security Department of Health, but I, I would still like to do a pilot test on this system, and to give us another option down the road, in case, you know, Green Lawn's doing a pilot now, and our department proves they're fine, but this could be another option for the village in regards to the water treatment. So, I want to try to get ahead of this, start our own pilot testing program, submit the results to the health department, this would give us more options for treatment of water going forward. Right now, we're limited to one system, you know, past number of board meetings, I requested authorization to purchase this one system, next, you know, everybody's had fighting over, everybody's learned demand for, this hopefully will be another option, so I want to try to get ahead of it and...
Is it cheaper than...?
It, it ultimately would be cheaper, the actual, the, the, the system that we're moving forward with right now, if that actual completion system would be cheaper than the system, but that system requires a lot of additional purchases to go along with it, cross-site storage tanks, GAC filters and stuff like that. This system might cost more initially, but there, there are no other additional peripheral purchases that would need to be done. So, and again, it's another option, if there's fifty, if the demand for the other products, and there's a shortage and you can't get it in time, this, this could be another option in terms of, in order to, to try to meet the requirements that it seems to be heading towards.
So, the low term maintenance cost in this would be less than the other part?
It would be, yes, it would be a repetitive purchase of crossfire, or like that, so it'd be different. The operating cost, while it still uses usually light, so electricity cost will probably still be the same, it would be the purchase of the crossside and storage tanks, and storage tanks go along with it, and everything else, yeah.
Plus the GAC filters, the buildings that surround the GAC filters, or do you produce them out there?
Choice pilot test, do you have any results back?
No, these take a long time, we, we're on our third pilot test right now, currently right now, which I'll show you a little bit of the original system I talked about, the first system's called AOP, the second is called AOP plus. So, the original AOP system, we're on our third pilot test now, fourth one is scheduled to start next week. Once those are complete, we'll submit, once we get the results back, we'll submit everything to the health department, and then we can, you know, hopefully the health department will prove them, and sign off on them, and we can be ready to go start installing the equipment once we receive.
Is the, is the building the update from the state's point of view?
Nothing yet, no. And actually, I have one more item, item number 16. This is an award, considering, we're rejecting the low bidder for the purchase of an indoor-outdoor forklift down at the yard, the bid proposal was not, was incomplete, and did not meet our bid specifications, so we're going with the second lowest bidder, at a cost of $67,900. It's a $1,400 difference between the rejected little bidder and the current bidder.
I have a question regarding, are you finished?
Yeah.
I have a question regarding the wells, well 10, is that, that's up behind Stewart School, is that?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. I'd like members of the community to ask if they could get a map that would show them where the wells are. Do we have any such map, or could we create one? Up here, we're doing a lot of discussion. Oh, you don't want to share that?
No.
Is that safe? Okay, all right, but they asked me for it, so I, I wasn't aware of that.
Security issue.
Yeah.
You're aware of that? Yes, security issue.
Okay. Mrs. Wu?
Good evening. Tonight, there's only a couple of items on the agenda. The first one is incorporation of revenue from the police department, from insurance securities, from an accident, car accident, and those funds will be used to offset the cost of the maintenance of the vehicle. There's a transfer of funds in the personnel department for the engagement of an FBI HR firm that provides the ACA reporting, and a budget transfer in the police department from one account to the other. Those are basically all the items titled on the agenda for the finance department.
Mrs. Wu, only question I have is, did our next accountant, has already started?
Yes, we did have our second accountant start, Kevin Mitchell started last week, and so we're very happy and excited to have him, and he's been with us now for a little over a week.
And if you, just a generalized question, are we now basically up to this step that you feel that we need to have?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mayor. Recreation this evening has one item on the agenda, item number nine, purchase of an aerial lift truck from Altech Industries, this is to replace a 2001 aerial lift truck, number 432, which is going out of service. This is part of the 2019-2020 Capital Budget Plan, it was originally budgeted at $75,000. However, under New York State contract, the actual cost was $109,469. We do have adequate funds available in our capital fund due to a cost savings in the purchase of a tow behind mower from St. Paul's, so with this purchase, our capital equipment line is still under budget for the year.
What was here? Why did it go from 72 to 110?
I have no explanation for that, I did not prepare the original $75,000 estimate, I have...
That's just a mistake?
I think it was a mistake.
Obviously, somebody made a mistake, they, they didn't...
That would be my suspicion.
On the piece of equipment that's going out of service, can we get anything as returned?
I'm not sure, we're going to have Rich read it, take a look at that, normally we do have some resale value on those lift trucks, so long as they pass the inspections and the tests on all the hydraulics and electrics on the truck.
Thank you.
Can I just comment as well, we do have an auction to finance, and a lot of times we deal with more than we suggested the value, they would do a good job with that. The other thing is that, there's been this event for recent years between the purchase of some of this equipment, between parks and our mechanics who always were involved, so I think some of the funding variances because they didn't include the mechanics, we're going to have change in the code of force, the mechanics were involved in selection of this equipment and pricing.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the same question, dirty too, with the 17 grand, because we just didn't really catch what the, the cost was, and we didn't budget, or was it that we waited seven months, or...
No, actually, the, the way this, this item is purchased, the, the chassis of the item is on state contract, the body of the, of the truck is not on state contract, it's a, it's a sole source supplier who raised this price.
Okay.
That's how it's built.
This is how many kinds of work, so can we be a little more careful about how we do this, because this is not the first time I've heard that explanation in 11 years.
Why would you say more careful, to have to increase the budget?
Whatever it should be, but it seems like if every time, we're going to have this explanation of, oh, after we go to buy it, there's two places we are going to vote, we should know that, at some point, we have to learn from our past experience.
We do know that there's two parts to the truck on the block.
Okay, then how do we come up with a budget number that was $17,000 short?
We did the budget, it was based on the cost that I had at that time.
So, so what you're telling us is, which part of the allowance in there, the 5% on the independent price that covers the services unless...
I think, or, or it's just because budget, January, June 1st, or equal eight, whatever it is, why are we not immediately buying it, because that's the price we're relying on, instead of seven months later?
Well, the, the fund hasn't gotten available until June 1st, and I am partial to then, the budget is put together in December, January, so there is always going to be a six-month lag before we can purchase.
We can make that, it should close, thank you.
We were running, we were running into this in, Chief said, too.
I'm not blanking, I mean, we've just got to be a little more, see if we can fix this gap problem, you know, let's...
One of the things that we do is that, again, luckily, because of the way the village is, is that we do have significant reserves, so the bottom line is if we sit there and we find a particular item and we're going to purchase it, you know, a lot of companies have heard in the past, well, you know, we have to wait until the budget actually starts. If we remember years ago, when we were dealing with benches and chairs and stuff at, at the pool, and we sat there and we were basically ordering it, two weeks before the pool, we were paying, we were overnighting benches, which I used to be in freight, many years ago, I can't even imagine what the freight cost, or if we do that, so maybe what we do is try to figure out some way of a system, without making the finance department the same, where we can sit there and say, okay, if in the event we're going to purchase X, Y, Z, we take the money, we take it out of, out of the excess, and then, or the reserves, rather, and turn around, make the purchase, and then once the fiscal year starts, you just take the money back, so I don't know if that's possible.
That makes, that makes some sense.
Yeah, there's got to be some way that we can cut down that...
Well, once we know how much is in the budget, and the budget's going to be approved, and then we immediately...
Make the purchase.
Make the purchase.
Yeah.
Eat that, wait until June 1st. It's the reserve, and then wait, wait until...
Well, perhaps, typically for, for DPW, because... Typically for DPW equipment, since it's close to sometimes over a million dollars, we bond those projects, the first step is in April to do the bond resolution for those, and then typically when the bond resolution stop period runs out, then that's when the items get purchased, you know, starting June 1st, so there is a little wait period.
Yeah, but could we, in that example, do it in a way? We've passed the bond resolution, passed the budget, why couldn't we purchase it, just making this up, June 6th? Because we, so they might be interested in the way the price is going to rise, right? So, and then just transfer the funds later in the year, is that possible?
It is possible, the other thing to keep in mind is, the new models of these vehicles usually come out in September, so if we buy in June, we could also be purchasing an end of the year model, if you wait a couple months, you can get the new year's model.
At a higher price.
Yeah.
So, the idea is that, I think, it's about the estimate, right? So, if you know that we're asking for it in January, and you know you're not going to get, you know, until the next model year, the following November, you might want to build a 20% offering for that eventual, right? But it's usually about 20% every time you go through this, so, I think that's the, the issue right now, is not spending the money, seeing that there's a, so, either you buy early in like a seat, like a, you know, pay for it with one way in and charge it back to the other part of the budget that gets freed up, or you got to build something in there so that you know that you're going to, you know, you're going to be spending a little bit more than the, than the price at the time.
Yeah, and keep in mind, this is, this is one vehicle that's 11 that we purchased that came in above budget, the other vehicles came in either on budget or slightly below, so...
Wait, so it wasn't...
We're just trying to figure out how to shut that window down. I'm getting back to Mr. Blake, Mr. Blake, one of the things, I know that when you took over, one of the things that you made a commitment to do is to evaluate, you can look at all different segments of the village, one of the things that I've received a lot of positive feedback is your evaluation and different things that you've done at the senior center, so to screw some things up and to, as we say, get it to where it should be, so could you maybe just give the board an idea of the different things that you've done?
Really, what we've done is just stepped up our attention to the building and to the services that we provide, including cleaning and repairing things as quickly as we can when they go awry. We've probably changed out four dozen floor tiles that were cracked or discolored badly, we have a company coming in on Friday to strip the floors and wax them, we've gone around and patched all kinds of little holes in the walls, cleaned up some drips in sinks, we've increased the cleaning of the bathrooms, we have to do a deep cleaning every night, you know, clean during the day by the staff that is on, on site, we've gotten estimators to have that faulty dishwasher in the kitchen repaired that hasn't worked, I think, from day one, and the maintenance department has been doing a little bit of patching and repairing on, on walls and on molding and on doorways and jams, and everything now is looking pretty good, it's clean, everything works properly, and the building is getting to where we want it to be.
Which I appreciate, and I, a lot of the senior residents I've mentioned, I've committed they have noticed a change.
That's, that's our pleasure.
Good, now, just the one last thing I just wanted to do, was I happened to stop by there the other night, and I just wanted to commend Sandy Young, she was actually running a dinner for a special needs group, and to see the effort, the organization that was done, the smile on those young people's faces, it was really a tremendous thing, and you know, a lot of times people don't realize all the different programs that they do with the senior center, it, it really was a tremendous job, and I mean, she's in there, she's cooking, she's organizing, I went around, I introduced myself to the different people... I went around, I introduced myself to the different people there. I mean, she's, it was, I mean, she was just literally going nonstop. I was there for 20 minutes, and I didn't think she gave a breath.
That's a terrific program, and she does cooking with them at least one time a month, so they get repetition on the cooking skills. We have them at the Moon Glow mini golf that we did on Halloween. They had a great time there. We do some physical games with them once a month. It's a program that comes from the heart, and she's really committed to it, and it's a terrific program. We're very proud of it.
Well, I wish that, those are the types of things I wish that we would make the community aware, that we do deal with the village. I think that that's the type of thing, it would be great to take the kids' pictures, to show the community that this is a facility that's being used for many different things. So I would encourage you to, if you could, to increase that exposure. I think it would be great.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
I have one question, actually. The football field at Stewart, the one they use for Thunder, I mean, they're mostly used in community park now. My daughter had cheerleading over at Stewart Field. I forgot how bad shit that was. What's, just refresh my memory, is that due to be turfed anytime soon? Is that on the strategic plan?
No, that was always to be natural turf.
It is.
We are gonna renovate infield on, the back field on Field Number Two is getting new clay and being...
Are you gonna remove that front diamond now? Or don't, that front diamond is...
They were talking about potentially leaving, but they're gonna get the parking in the back.
Yeah, we never addressed the final plan. We should look at it. The only reason why I say, I mean, my oldest son was laughing about it, but when they play football games there, the last, like, 25 yards is in the infield of the baseball dome. It's like Don't Know Where You're Going. Yeah, 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 exactly. So you're running, you know, you think you're giving, you're going in for the touchdown, and you hit the infield. There's the rise on the infield, and you literally see them fall down like they got shot from the air. And besides crushing kids' dreams of a touchdown, no, it would be good, at least if it's flatter, however we plan it out to make sure that that football field, because you can really hurt your ankle or something like that there. You know, that was the only field for a ton of years. But now that, when you're out now with community park and play the high school, it's nice, it's perfect. And then you go back there and you go, like, this is kinda sad.
Well, I never wanna crush a child's dream, number one.
Not as the rec guy, definitely not.
Number two, what we...
Library, I mean.
And that one.
I did it on purpose.
That's on video, too.
Good luck, honey.
What we can do...
Still being shot from the air, library is...
What we can do, before we get into football season next year, we'll have the crew go out and we'll cut down that mound that comes up every fall at the edge of the infield. We'll try to get that a little more level for you. Absolutely, we can do that.
But sometimes, like...
Do you wanna keep them off that infield?
You'd have to replant kinda how you did it. So that's, that's just the thing. If we're gonna replant it, we're gonna look at it, just look how to fit the football field a little bit better.
If you move it back, I think it'd be on the infield on Field Two. I don't think we've got enough room to get it off the infills. We'll take a look. I just, I don't think it fits in over there any other way.
But is that because the field closest to the parking lot exists? Can't pull it south?
If we pull it south towards the parking lot, you'd be, you'd have more of the field on that infield, I would think.
You can't pull it north.
I don't, I don't...
The easy solution is get rid of that dime, first front dime. Isn't that what we need to do?
And then you could also...
Let's go to the back, give two dimes to that. I've never seen all three, for example, being used.
One would be added for Dixon.
Again, they're different base paths, different lanes. We've been down this road before, but we can certainly look at that.
No, no.
It's Dixon.
No, it's a little guy.
Oh, Stewart, little guy.
Yeah, yeah, Stewart.
Mr. Blake, if you're gonna have that organized, it's planned already.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go back to item number four that was generally covered. Just so the public's aware that on the front page of the village website, we have selections on the left side, blue bars with buttons, if you will. And any work that's been done by utility, whether it be PSCG, National Grid, Long Island Railroad, we always put information about the project there. In the case of this particular project that this licensing agreement deals with, it is known as the PSCG Long Island Western Nassau Transmission Project. And the PSCG is conducting four open houses on the project, one in Alveron, one in West Hampshire, one in Lindbrook. And the one that's local is at the Garden City Hotel on November 12th, at 11:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. So if you have questions of PSCG, you should go to that, the Garden City Hotel. You can also go to any of the other three sites. Again, it's on the website. It just says open houses, the top selection. Item number five...
As long as you tell them that on the website, maybe also deep removal dates and where they are and where they go. Is also that?
There's an alert section on the front page that's in there. Is it right?
So people can find out where they're up to?
Yes. It's right on the notifications, the first item.
Okay, so on the home page.
And the list of dates when we get in progress over.
Also, item number five is just stop iron snow, 555 Suter Avenue. We had screen, and this is probably the last rule of village, but allows us to dump the snow that we collect on the streets, pile up the streets, dump it there and melt. Number six is a, is an agreement with Centaurian Marshland Company. This is for, help us with our fiduciary services for the village's deferred compensation plan. We want to dump costs to the village, deferred compensation, any stuff for them, we'd like the board to approve. Also, two items around the agenda while I have the microphone. The AT School restoration starts on Monday, November 4th. It should be completed late Tuesday afternoon or early Wednesday, the upcoming next week. And also, the long anticipated completion of the St. Paul's compensation began in earnest this morning. The target date to have it completed is 11/20, and then they will come back and install all the fixtures. It should be ready for the church, if you want. And that's my thing.
Trustees, do you have any informational questions? Trustee Joey.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Just to mention it, I know a couple of others before. We'd like us seriously to consider something in this village for Mr. Stewart. She was actually more involved than Mr. Stewart, and no one's ever done anything, so... I don't know if you wanna create a statue across with him, remember this, whatever it is. But let's do something, I would suggest. We could build it into the next budget. Anyways, on number 17, I have a question. I believe, and I know why, they don't have the parade anymore in Garden City, because they didn't wanna pony up and pay any costs. But it seems that every year, we end up paying costs and don't get reimbursed for it. So what services are we providing, and why do we provide any of these services? I believe we incur police costs for this parking lot usage, and I'm not sure why. So I would suggest we stop and just tell Nassau County Police to cover it, since it's in their parking lot.
I think Commissioner Jackson didn't know the answer. I thought the county had pretty much taken over for this parade.
Yes, they do, but we usually, one officer, two officers, and then special police usually help out. Because it does, well, some of that area is ours also, Tennessee driving all country road. The cost is usually, you know, but we do assign people to...
I think it's usually about five or six grand a year.
Well, no, no, not that much, no.
Why don't you talk to the county and see if they would help us out a little bit? What we can...
I don't want to help the county, I don't...
Yes.
Well, what we do is the other way around. Why don't we ask the county to help us out in the parking lot?
I will go with...
The Nassau County Park, or something.
I will go with the Allen Old Shore, it's okay.
Okay, but what, all we can do is ask. If they can't help us, they can't help us, but at least it would help.
Will do.
I just have a question on the first one, the insurance transfer. It has nothing to do with any particular project, but how come we have to end up doing this? Don't we get, like, if whatever truck or car gets hit, doesn't it, the check gets written to the village? Why do we have to approve a transfer? I'm just curious how that works.
So what happens is we, you know, process of like, the orange carrier that writes a check, you can have it add into the revenues account, which is the insurance recoveries. And the cost to fix the vehicle, whatever it is, you know, that, those funds need to be appropriated or approved by the board to increase our budget to be able to, you know, expend the cost to fix the vehicle. So it goes into the expense budget account, so we can pay to fix the vehicle.
It seems to kinda circle up. I have, I have, it just seems like odd, we get a check, they reimburse us for our police car or, you know, rec car, all of our property, why do we have to do this? It just seems silly.
On the agenda, also, it's just a formality, the board has to approve the appropriation, increasing the budget for this cost.
I was just curious, if there's some way you could make your life a little easier without dealing with this silly stuff.
Trustees, anything further?
That's right, good question. Mr. Defense is going, the dorm bathroom at the library is complete and open?
The bathroom is complete. Pictures of it, we'd like to show.
So maybe, maybe this is a good time. If you know, I have, he has some update on projects, since we're talking about the lost AT Stewart.
We did three bathrooms at the library, right?
That's correct. Yes, the bathrooms are complete. I'll have some pictures for you in a moment. There are a few punchless items left, too, to complete. The hallway outside the bathroom still needs to be painted. So, there was three bathrooms, combined into three. This is the children's bathroom, which is on the children's side of the library. This is the handicap accessible family bathroom. This was two bathrooms that were combined into one, to have, there's adequate space for wheelchairs to enter into the room. This is just a view, different angle view of the room. And this is the adult bathroom on the, I guess it's the east side bathroom in the building.
We have drawers in the windows, right?
That's correct, yes.
And we got this project done in about eight months or less, correct? Since the village decided to take it over, been languishing for four or five years, I believe, is that correct? Just say yes.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Well, on the topic, I'll mention a few other items. The street department has been very busy around the village, doing a lot of improvements in drainage, starting at parking field 7S. We increased the capacity of the drainage over there. We added a second catch basin in the area. This is just some work, pictures of the work that was done there to improve the drainage in parking field 7S. We also added, replaced a collapsed basin on the corner of North Avenue and Brixton. That's some of the work going on right there. And also another basin on Beach Street and St. James South. In addition, the street department installed the accessible parking spaces on Seventh Street. This is the one in front of Starbucks. This is across the street from Starbucks. And the third one down on the west side of Seventh Street, on the southwest corner near Hilton. I spoke before about pilot testing that's currently going on. Here's a few pictures of the pilot testing that's currently happening at Wells 1516. The way this works is they back a truck up with the filtration system that's inside it, a mini version of a system that we're looking to purchase, and they run their testing. This is a better view of the system right there. That silver canister on the bottom contains the UV lights that the water goes through. The peroxide is injected into there, and the light, the UV light reacts with the peroxide to destroy the dioxide. These are the containers. All these containers need to be filled and sent off to laboratory for testing, and the results are reviewed by the health department. These are mini GAC filters, which then filter out the peroxide from the water after it's treated. So this is kind of a mini version of what we would have to install, a much larger version, once these pilot tests are done and the product starts arriving and we start installing it.
Joe, do we take the peroxide out? Is there any way we can use that peroxide again?
No, the product, the peroxide can't... The other system I have on the agenda tonight, doesn't use peroxide, uses titanium dioxide. That can be reused over and over again for, in some cases, up to 10 years, which is where some other savings comes in, so...
What do we do with peroxide?
It's, well, the GAC filters get filtered out any peroxide after it goes through the treatment for the dioxide. So that's the way the system works, is the water gets pumped into the system, into the containers that contain the UV light. UV light reacts with the peroxide to destroy the dioxide. Then it gets sent to the GAC filters. These blue cans right here are a mini version of GAC filters. They filter out any of the peroxide that's left in the water, and then the water goes, you know, out to the system.
What do we do with that stuff?
Well, there's carbon inside these tanks, so once the carbon is worn out, it's removed from the tanks, it's disposed of, and then we put new carbon.
Right, the acid filtration diminishes the GAC filters until they're no longer effective. So every five to seven years, maybe sooner than one year, that's replaced.
But is that, is that what we have to dispose of that, or, I mean, what, how do we, how do we dispose?
Well, we don't dispose of it. The company comes in, they dispose it for us. They remove the used up carbon. I believe it's, I believe it's in the landfills, but I'm not, I don't, not certain about that, so... Currently, right now, the PPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, is drilling four monitoring wells in the village, on the east side of the village, down on Garden Street. In that area, they've started drilling the first well in the median, on Garden, over by Grove Park. This is some of the work that's going on now. This is, the EPA has been monitoring the plume that's coming through the village. There are numerous monitoring wells throughout the village. This is another four that they're putting in to try to kinda surround the plume and figure out the edges of it and which way it's traveling. So this is some of the work that's currently going on now, is they drill the well in the median over on Garden. It looks like a lot, but actually, when they're done, all that's gonna be left is a little round well cover that you see in the road, in the middle of the grass area there.
And they're also gonna restore any of the trees and bushes they took down.
Absolutely, anything that, any damage they do to landscaping, grass, trees, anything in that area, any damage to curbs or roadways, they are gonna restore when they're completed. This project you're looking at here will be completed before Thanksgiving. And then the other three wells will be drilled after New Year's, so as not to disturb the holiday area. That's trustee Harvey, yes, on the left hand. Some other projects that are complete on Pine Street, it was a warm summer on Pine Street. We did water main replacement. We paved the road. As part of the water main replacement, we replaced all the fire hydrants on the block. We placed all the water services to everybody's houses on the block, on the village portion of the connections. Any sidewalks, curbs, crosswalks, I'm sorry, corners now have all detectable pads. And there's also a fresh new road paved there. So hopefully, the residents of Pine Street won't need our services for many years to come. We did an LED lighting conversion at the waterworks department in the garages and the work areas in the back. It was a very dark area for anybody who's been back there. As you can see on the bottom there, it's much brighter now, and we've used LED lighting. It was actually so bright that we used brighter lights in the back and a slightly dimmer LED light in the front, because when the trucks pulled in at night, it was almost blinding. But now it's a much safer work environment for everybody who works down at Water Works. Plus, there's the appropriate cost savings that come along with that. For those who aren't aware, we did some restoration work on the Fire Department Memorial here on the grounds of Village Hall. This is what the monument looks like now. We took down trees and shrubbery around it, redid the brickwork leading up to the monument, had the monument cleaned. We new corking, re-corked it, you know, to seal it better. The parks department did a fantastic job. We're planting around it. It looks great. In addition, what we did, there was never an entrance to this monument from the backside of it in the parking lot, so we opened it up. We were only able to access it from Stewart Avenue. So, we opened up the back. We now have a pathway from the parking lot here in Village Hall to the monument itself. We've opened up the back of it. If you look closely on the left-hand side, you can see that they've actually run a room on the front for the names, and they've started engraving them on the back. So, we really wanted to make sure that everybody had a full three hundred and sixty degree access to this monument to be able to observe it. The brickwork came out really well, I think. I guess phase two of this project, we're going to be adding lighting to this monument, lighting poles in the area. And I think it's a good project, it's really nice.
Excellent, yeah, excellent.
And then the last thing is the cleaning and restoration of the Stewart Bus that Mr. Swazie mentioned before. That work is underway currently, as they are going to be, I believe they power wash the pedestal below it. And now they are working on cleaning the monument itself, the bronze monument on top itself, for the bicentennial celebration of the village.
And just ahead on this project here, today they've been using a scaffold. See there, but the ground is so soft because of the rain and because of removal of brush. They'll be bringing lifting on tomorrow or Tuesday, which will be on the asphalt, so for emergency vehicles in there, there's plenty of them to get around. And just be aware that there will be a vehicle that can access it on road, for a while.
Mayor, I agree with the tour of all these projects with Trusty Francisco, and I can tell you, they're all moving along very well. Look at the library bathrooms, and they're beautiful. They really are. Nice work. There's still a little more work to do there. The Comfort Station at St. Paul's Fields, the tiles were being laid, and again, they look nice and look like the pitch was right towards the drain. Paul, if you could, thank you guys for the plantings around that Fire Department Memorial. It really came out beautiful.
It's my pleasure.
And they were great. They were great. From the start, they got it ready for fire prevention, before fire prevention, so to pass that along really was good. And the other thing, that E P A drill, that whole setup there, I was quite surprised at how, it didn't make much noise. It really was not that noisy when they were drilling down. So, that's another thing. I think the E P A is, you know, doing a good job of, you know, taking care of us and the residents there, so...
And as you know, Mark, they promised us that they would move it as quickly as possible at the noise level, and they restored it quickly. We're just, Mark and I and Mr. Swazie have had a number of meetings with the E P A to make sure that that went as smoothly as they can go.
I spoke to one of the project managers there, and they said they are in the schedule, which is a nice thing as well. If all goes like that, which I hope it does, it'll go pretty smooth. So, thank you all, guys, good luck.
Could we get an update, if possible? Joe and council on our H VAC issues in the Senior Center? Is that solved, resolved, settled, not settled?
May I suggest that that be done in executive session?
So, the answer would be no.
No, the answer is that...
The answer is it's not settled.
No, the answer is, yeah, obviously, a problem that has to be...
Still a question. Okay, thank you.
Anything further for the trustees?
I myself would like to point out that on November ninth at noon, there's going to be a replacement ceremony by the, taken care of by the Long Island Division of the Forty Second Rainbow Division Association and the Sixty Ninth Regiment. And it was really, we did a lot in that area, and the gentleman, his name escapes me right now, but the gentleman who is in charge of all of this failed thrilled at what we did over there. And we changed all of the sidewalks, all of Long Island's skating. And so, it's a very brief ceremony, and it would be nice if people came. The other thing is that on November eleventh, Veterans Day, there will be a ceremony to honor our veterans at what's starting to be called here, I noticed, the Garden City Plaza, where the Zito is, and then we're close to the railroad station there. And we have beautiful monuments there. There will be a ceremony to honor our veterans, and I think that we owe it to them, and I urge you to come. That, too, is not a very long ceremony. And these are people who left their families and went and served, and happily did come back. And we want to let them know, year in, year out, that we appreciated that. So, two ceremonies, one November ninth and one November eleventh. And once again, there are re-ceremonies, and we...
Do you have a choice, for those of you...
I beg you, one? Oh, yes. I think at noon, November ninth, thank you. And at eleven o'clock on November eleventh. Okay, so now we will, trustee Sancho, for the comments. So, then we will have, and welcome, our citizens' comments on agenda items. Is there anyone with us that would like to come up to the microphone? Seeing not, we will move on. I would like to approve the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October seventeenth, twenty nineteen meeting? And Trusty Makinos, and seconded by Trusty Hare, and all in favor. And that passed, and that carried eight zero. Going on, I am going to ask, I have a few comments about the formal agenda. We recently reinvigorated the Civic Beautification Committee. And we were missing, there is always one resident who represents each section of the village, and we weren't, we didn't have anyone in the west. But now, I must compliment Roseanne, I think it is Bernice, who is the president of the Western Property Owners Association. As soon as I asked her to see if she could find someone for that section of the village, she got right on it, and we then did this, came back with someone. So, that is fully stamped, Maureen Lyons, Eight Placestale Road in Garden City. I am going to ask for a motion. Can I at this time ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar? And Trusty Makinos, and seconded by Deputy Mayor Boldruck, all was in favor. And the motion carried unanimously. Now, we will move all the way to the end. And we will have citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone with us, seeing who would care to comment on, would like to mention that microphone? If not, then may I ask for a motion?
May we make motions to adjourn the meeting?
As he says. And as soon as it sounds seconded, trustee Makinos, and all in favor. And then, we will wait, thank you.